More alcohol September 6, 2022. City Council meeting to order. I ask council members Tara Skinner to lead our invocation and pledge. If you would please stand.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity for us to get together to do city business. I pray that we do it in a way that's pleasing to you. And Father, please continue to keep your arms around Councilman Ernest Brooks and his daughter Erin. Let him know that you will never leave him, forsake him. These we pray for you in your name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as from.
All right, item three is roll call. Marquise, you can see that all members are present with the Secretary of Councilman Dickens, who will address that later on in the meeting. Item four is approval of the minutes of the August 2, 2022 meeting and the August 9 special call meeting. Those minutes were emailed out. There's no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will stand approved as read. We do have two proclamations today, and the first one will be for the West Tennessee Madison's senior women's basketball team. Do you want me to propose? And we have talent in Jackson, West Tennessee. So this proclamation reads where is the West Tennessee Madison senior women's basketball team are three times national senior Olympic champions. The team is comprised comprised of former basketball standouts from all across West Tennessee, whereas some of the women have been playing together for over 50 years. Y'all started when you're only two years old and participated annually in 20 senior games during that time. The West Tennessee Madison senior women's basketball team won the gold medal in 2007 in Louisville, Kentucky, won their second national championship in Albuquerque, New Mexico in 2019, whereas this time the West Tennessee Madison senior women's basketball team went undefeated throughout the tournament to bring home the gold in the 70 age division, whereas every year these women have won or placed in every state national invitational tournament, whereas they have earned the distinguished honor of being the first senior basketball team in Madison County to win three national senior Olympic champions. And the city of Jackson acknowledges their talent of the West Tennessee Madison senior women's basketball team. Now therefore, I Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, hereby proclaim today, September 6, 2022, is West Tennessee Madison's day. Congratulations.
We work hard and we're proud of what we've accomplished and we just encourage people you're never too old and never too old to start playing and having fun.
There you go. That's great. This proclamation proclamation reads where is Lifeline was founded in 1947. Jackson Medical Laboratory and Blood Bank opened its donors its doors on the second floor of 607 Highland Avenue in Jackson, Tennessee. You're hiding over there. Yeah. And where is Lifeline Blood Services is celebrating their 75th anniversary of saving lives in West Tennessee, whereas the need for blood remains as relevant now as it did 75 years ago. We are proud to serve West Tennessee and continue to provide safe blood products and for the communities they serve, whereas blood donation is essential to help patients survive surgeries, cancer treatment, chronic illness, traumatic injuries. The life-saving care starts with one person making generous donation, whereas by donating blood, you are ensuring the life-saving gift is available to your family, friends, and neighbors when they need it. Now therefore, I Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, hereby proclaim September 6, 2022, is Lifeline Blood Services Day.
If you are a blood donor, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. If you would like to become a blood donor, our doors are open and we are so thankful for the community's support over the past 75 years. We're excited for our future and again, we're so thankful.
All right, item six is invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any item under first reading can be recognized at that time. Under first reading, item one is consideration of proposed budget amendment for Community Economic Development Commission, FY23, in the amount of $13,832.
Good morning. This budget amendment, this budget amendment would increase the both the expense account for CEDC as well as the revenue account where they reimburse us for this cost, so no impact on the city's budgets.
All right, any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Can you recognize?
So moved.
Close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion move eight to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment for human resources, the amount of $116,636.
Yes, this this budget amendment would allocate funds, appropriate funds for a pending back pay issue with an employee that's not budgeted for at this time.
Any questions from council?
Can you go in a little bit more detail?
I'm sorry.
This was an employee with with city court who was put on unpaid leave back in 2020 and was acquitted over charges and so.
Back paid.
Back paid for that. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So moved. Second, a motion to second. This is an item under first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, item three is a consideration of an ordinance to amend Title 17 Refusing Trash Disposal Ordinance for the City of Jackson, Tennessee. Chris and Lady Lonnie will come up. Any other legal? Lucy, you want to go ahead and come up too?
Good morning.
Just in case you need a pop quiz this morning.
Yes, pop quiz. With assistance from the Coats Committee and attorney Teresa Luna, we are proposing a rewrite of the municipal waste ordinance based on the current solid waste contract and an additional chapter for special collections of bulk waste and bulk yard waste. We started meeting about bulk waste operations over a year ago focusing on the concerns from the community, council, and administration. The new chapter of special collections meets the majority of these concerns, but most importantly sets attainable standards for both the city and the community. During the research of other municipalities, we realized that our city provides unique services to our residents. So I'd like to thank everyone who have been a part of the many discussions and very difficult tasks to customize and improve the operation for bulk waste services. With that being said, Chris will go over the new chapter of special collections.
Just to touch on some of the main changes to it in 17401, we're going to limit it to 12 pickups per residence per year, and we're also going to ask residents to separate their bulk waste, like furniture appliances, from the yard waste. In 17402, Part Two, we're going to limit the size of the yard waste. It can't be over eight foot long and the limbs can't be over 12 inches in diameter. All bulk waste must be scheduled. We're looking at some software. They can go online and do it themselves, or they can continue to call our office and we can schedule. And the we're going to make them schedule, and you can't put your bulk waste, like your appliances, furniture out before 48 hours before your scheduled date. Limbs are a little different because you can't ever tell when, you know, wind storms and when you're going to clean your yard, so we're going to give seven days timeframe on that. We're going to limit the size of the pile to a five by five by eight. And in Part Six, where the debris has to originate from the property where it's placed and the property has to be occupied at the time it's scheduled. And then everything outside of that, like your piles that are too large, debris that's we don't pick up, we will, we're going to send it to the building department. They're going to contact the property owner, give them 72 hours to have it removed. If they don't, the city will go collect it and send them a bill for it. And that's.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I think it's well overdue that we put something in place, but based on the timeframe that you're giving, if they put out in a refrigerator stove, are we going to be able to meet that time if the requirement that we're giving them, are we going to be able to pick it up?
Yeah, through the scheduling system, we're going to have a cap on it. Right now, we're picking up over 300 piles a day. So we're going to start out in a safe zone to make sure on appliances and junk, pretty much, you you can plan that. So we are going to have a safe cap. We'll be able to increase that as our resources come in. We're looking at, what, 150 piles a day, just to be on the safe side of that, make sure we can meet our needs. In times of an emergency where we've had several setbacks, we're working on a contract right now that'll be a subcontractor that they'll be able to help us out if we get into a bind.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, and thank you all.
All right, we have a motion to second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Chairman. This is beginning January 1st, correct?
January 1st.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so I think this is a good change, but a change nonetheless. What resources do we have planned to help educate the public about how things will be done differently moving forward?
We're currently putting together a packet very similar to when we did the solid waste curbside, and we'll be putting those on the carts. Those are eligible customers, of course, so that's the easiest way. We'll be putting a packet together with a lot of education and guidelines and policies in there.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from council, comments? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second reading, item one is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located 159 O'Whel Road from AOFHFW Agriculture Open Flood Hazard Floodway District to ORFHFW Office Residential Flood Hazard Floodway District comprising of 11.2 acres more or less.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, item two is proposed budget amendment for professional services wage compensation study in the amount of $24,450.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment transfer from general fund to capital outlay fund for street resurfacing, street resurfacing in the amount of $3,028,608.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment transfer from general fund to replace property tax revenue in the amount of $824,172.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, we own a new business. Item one is consideration of a contract for A&E services for Liberty Park Preliminary Park Master Plan.
Morning, council.
Good morning.
Oh, this is the contract for an A&E for the Park Master Plan for Liberty Park.
Basically, what this does is, for whatever reason, for years, Liberty Park has had real good support by the citizen group, and many of the things that are there have been some good things. However, there never really was a organized, structured master plan, so things were kind of put in, which were good things. So this gives us, you know, legal, legal coverage in that we will have an A&E firm that signs off on any, any future development within the park, and I think that's necessary so that we have things in the park that we are aware of and that we have approved.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, item two is consideration of a contract for A&E for Liberty Park Stage Structure Design.
That ties within what just previously was voted on. There is a plan now for a children's stage in the children area of the park. This group is raising funds to build it. I I did agree in a met with the mayor, we agreed that we would do the design for that to help them have a picture and a view of what it's going to be and look like so that they could raise funds. And it's a, it's a very good, good project, and that's the reason that we wanted to make sure it was done the right way.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, we're taking care of the design. They're charged with raising the money for the structure.
They're raising the money. We're taking care of the design, true, along with the master plan.
Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is consideration of a resolution dedicating public right of way, public road right of way for rerouted fiberglass road.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a requirement from T.DOT because there was some additional right of way or property, I should say, that the city of Jackson owned. They wanted to designate what was actually going to be dedicated for the right of way, and that's what this resolution does. It establishes that what's going to be right of way and what's not going to be right of way, and that that satisfies their requirements so they can proceed on with the project.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Let the record show that we have property in the area.
All right, thank you. Council, please vote.
Motion carry eight to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Item four is consideration of a resolution to approve consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for 2021, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You all, please bear with me. I left my reading glasses, so I may read numbers that aren't.
Hey, I see how Mark got up and then sat back down.
I told him I didn't need him that. Okay, so some of you may know, as a recipient of this community development block grant and home grant funding from HUD, we're required to submit to them an annual performance and evaluation report within 90 days of the closeout of our program year, which was June 30. And so we held a 15-day public review period. We had a public meeting. We presented the plan, excuse me, the report to the Jackson Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners as well for their recommendation of approval to you all. And so for the year, get to my page here. For the year, we committed and budgeted a total of $2,106,480 in the CDBG Home and the CDBG CARES Act funding. And CDBG funds of that, we expended $644,410. Home funds for the year, we expended $615,944. And the CDBG CARES Act funding, we expended $19,512 for total expenditures of $1,279,866. And the difference in the budgeted and expenditures was mostly the CARES Act funding, which is set aside for the shelter. So with those funds that we expended, that $1.27 million, we were able to provide through our nonprofit agencies that we contracted with, 1,873,000 low-income individuals and families with public services through like Boys and Girls Club, the Financial Empowerment Center, RIFA, Southwest At-Risk Youth Employment Program. And on the housing side, we're able, we were able to do minor repairs or acquisition and renovation to 19 housing units. And we were also, we also provided for the year a $500,000 loan in home funds to renovate, help with assist, I'll say, with the renovation of the villages of Old Hickory. That's 141 affordable housing units. And I have a breakdown in my pack, in the packet of each individual project, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the town? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second, have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Mark. Item five is a consideration of proposed annual report for the Audit and Budget Committee.
Yes, quickly, every year, as per our duties and for the audit committee, we're to present a annual report on the activity in the budget and audit committee. I'll kind of skip on to page four of your packet there. Some of the areas of concentration we had this year were continued focus on our budget process and facilitation, continuing to hone our budget calendar. We've had our goals and objective planning sessions with MTAAS over the year, as well as breaking out our budget work sessions into easier bites rather than having a eight-hour session. We've had two, three to four-hour sessions, I think was much easier for us to plan around. We also continued our COVID-19 pandemic revenue monitoring. Every month, we were looking at heavily impacted revenues such as state and local sales tax as well as hotel motel tax, and continuing to monitor those. Those have all rebounded very well. In addition, we've implemented quarterly financial reviews, which hopefully as time goes on and we continue the implementation process with our new technology, those will become a better tool for us to be able to budget and to pivot throughout the year. In addition to that, we've continued our, working with our internal auditor position. This year saw her audit activities extend into the Jackson Transit Authority, the city's findings in its annual financial audit, and as well as some, a report that came through the comptroller's office on the Jackson Police Department. She has instituted a, that department's instituted a, a plan of action for all of those, and we continue to monitor those and have found satisfaction in those plans. We also have been, continue our significant budget amendment review and recommendations. This year, that saw two significant operational proposals submitted by the Jackson Police Department and the Jackson Fire Department this prior year for salary and benefit adjustment. Those came through that committee as well as the recommendation and implementation over the prior year of our core financial software. And then the final thing that, that we really watch is our financial health monitoring. We have 17 indicators that we monitor throughout the year, and we, we revisit those at the end when we get our audited financial statement, and we're seeing continued growth and positive movement in, in many of those indicators. There's a couple that we'll continue to pay attention to over this year and into next year, but we're seeing positive movement from the city's financial standpoint over the past three years. I have expanded spreadsheet, if anybody's interested, on the financial monitoring. I don't know that we have to accept this, it just needs to be presented.
Any questions from council about the report? All right, thank you, Councilman Taylor and the Budget Committee for the work continues to be done. All right, item six is a proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan Community Support in the amount of $971,500.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll just quickly go over it. We went over it at the work session. So in February, Love Your Block team and myself was tasked with seeking public input for the remaining ARPA funding for community support. So since then, we've held two community meetings, and Love Your Block has held both a survey and a workshop, and through those, we've seen the interest and the need for affordable housing, vacant lot remediation, code violations, and home repairs. We received three proposals that align with that public input for, from Habitat for Humanity, their Aging in Place program, expanding the funding for the Love Your Block program, and funding for Salvation Army. So based on the public input and the increased need they have, these organizations have seen, we are proposing that just be funded. I am happy to answer any questions, and we also have representatives from those organizations here as well.
Thank you, Claire. Claire's worked very well with Love Your Block, and then, so we have Salvation Army, we have Habitat, and we have Love Your Block here. If there's any questions directly for them on what they plan to use, what their request is and what they plan to use the funds for. If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move the approval.
Second, have a motion to second. Any discussion from council?
Claire, thank you and everybody's work on this. I think when, when we implemented this as part of the ARPA spin plan, this is exactly what we were looking to have as be a part of these ARPA funds and their proposed use. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item seven is proposed budget amendment compensation, compensation study in the amount of $0.
When the council approved the budget ordinance for FY23, included in that was a placeholder, I think $2.5 million, if I remember correctly, to, to fund the compensation study. Subsequent to that, in this fiscal year, you guys approved a, an amendment to allocate that placeholder money to the various departments, based on what we understood the impact would be department by department at that particular time. Since then, the plan has been fully implemented, and we understand better now exactly where, more exactly anyway, where the, the budgeted dollars need to be. So what this amendment will do is simply reallocate that first amendment that you passed between the various departments to more accurately reflect where the impact will be realized, and the net impact is zero, so.
Any questions from council?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, item eight is a proposed sale of surplus property for 260 Cedar Street and 96 Cartmel Street.
So these two pieces of property are presented to you today for final approval of the So these two pieces of property are presented to you today for final approval of the sale. It's been through the process. The property at 260 Cedar Street, the offer amount is $15,000, and the property at 96 Cartmel, the offer is $2,750.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Item nine is consideration of proposal for groundwater reporting services for the old Madison County landfill.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item 10 is consideration of committee and board appointments, industrial development board, the appointment of Jimmy Harris to replace Rick Allison.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Keep Jackson Beautiful Board, the appointment of Allison Fite.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Net Advisory Board, the reappointment of LeAnn Braddock, Glenn Festmeyer, and Kim Reed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
The reappointment for the Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission, reappointment of Jerry Day and Charles Adams.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, item 10 is a, you have a letter in your packet, is a consideration for the approval of the resignation of Councilman Pickens, who is moving out of the district, it says moved out of the district because he said his final day would be the 31st of August.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Got ahead of myself, Marquesha, I apologize. Council, remember, the process will publish for resumes for District One residents to submit a resume, and then we'll, the council will appoint at the next, the October council meeting. Item 11, budget amendments less than 10,000. Item 12 is consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
No further business coming for the council, the meeting is adjourned.